And then they would have a chance to ask the questions at the meeting perhaps, and hear from council's perspective. After that meeting, we could then begin to enforce non-compliance.
I think it's a good step forward. They'll be educated about the issues that hoops that on the street.
The opportunity will be provided for them to become educated.
And the opportunity will be there. For those who come, we will have that. For us, we will have the knowledge regarding the liability of the town regarding that item, which we need to know. And then we will enforce. I appreciate that. Are you, Councilor, in favor of that direction for administration? Okay, thank you. So that being said, we're going to go to item nine. Item eight, as you could see, has, there is no financial report this month. We have quarterly reports. Under nine A, there is a report there given by Nolan regarding the fiscal quarter new house development. You can see there is a substantial amount of new starting up houses in the amount of about $814,000. Jeff, am I correct?
Eight seventy.
Eight seventy, okay. I'm not too far off. Which is a good sign for a town because that represents a fair amount of revenue. Nine B, Jeff has put together the CUP recommendation report in a table form with two different sections. One that represents reports or policies that should be put in place that were in the body of the report. And the second section, there were any appendices. So what Jeff intends to do with those is, as recommended, to put them within our strategic plan and to have them listed as short term, medium term, long term. With the idea that the long term will be accomplished before the end of this council is going back to the poll. And I appreciate that, Jeff, very much. And I can see that we already started to make some dent, dent in that. Any questions regarding that list? No? Okay. Thank you. So let's go to nine C, Strategic Planning Quarterly Report. Any updates that you want to talk about? No? Okay. Now in these Committee Report, I want to congratulate you all for your very serious approach to committee reporting. You've done an excellent job and I could really understand what was going on. There are a few things to note. On the airport committee, there was a recommendation to try to get a councillor from the county to sit at that committee with the rest of council and those who were there appointed. Councillor Bantry, thank you very much. We now have Councillor Coles that will be sitting as part of that committee.
What that does, Mary, if I can explain that, is also we have, we have a draft copy of, oh, you call it, Jeff?
We have policy and bylaw.
Yeah, policy and bylaw in draft form. And we could not continue on until we had the representation from the county. So now we can develop that and put into that.
Okay. Councillor, I have just a question for you as a matter of date. The Friday breakfast, you do not have the date there. Have they decided when it will be?
Uh, they're...
It's in June normally, but then...
Yes, and they're still looking at a date which is accommodating to most of the members of this airport.
An idea that it's not raining and cold.
Well, if we had another day like we had that night, fantastic. We had 12 or 13 planes sitting on the tarmac.
I know, I know last year you asked if we could come and help.
Absolutely.
So we'll, we'll, you can take us on that one.
Well, not as much help as just be there. You know, people really like to see the council members and...
Okay. I have a question for Councillor Baughers. Regarding the best practice study, you have a presentation this Thursday.
Thursday, correct.
You're going to be there?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Yes ma'am, I will be there.
What about the CUP conference? What's happening there?
So they're becoming a little more formalized. They've got some funding. I'll put a full report in for the, our next...
So you're going to go to the AGM?
The AGM was last, the AGM was Friday. Yeah, the AGM was on Friday. And they're now preparing for the next step. They have some preliminary commitments on some funding and they'll be available for them.
Have they decided on a space? Or are we still...
No, we're still ways away from a space. We're just now formalizing that it's probably going to be a corporation as opposed to a commission that's created. So that's the big news that came out of the AGM.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, it might interest the council if Councillor Pivoy reported on the ASHA conference that he went to and what's happening with our senior citizens.
Okay. Can you give me a chance to go through that and then we'll go back to Councillor Pivoy? Thank you. Jeff, I just wondered, regarding the collegiate committee, could we contact Mr. Stringham and try to see if we could put together a small report for us regarding the proceedings of his group?
Yes.
Thank you. Just so that we could have an official report for council. Does it make sense?
Yes.
Committee of Future, Councillor Edmonds, you're talking about the manager appraisal being done and a raise being given. Do you have an idea into which tune?
Into which what?
Which amount?
Two percent.
Oh, wow. Thanks. Just was curious. And for Councillor Barnes or Councillor Banry, regarding the fire, I appreciate that you have signed the, you have ratified the contract. Has that job description finally been brought forward?
Yes, it has.
So we now have an official job description for the fire chief?
Absolutely, yes.
I'm happy to hear that.
And it's been put up on the bulletin board for all of the firemen to read over and they've been told to read it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay. As for the rest, I'm going to quickly report on the youth council and then give Councillor Pivoy a chance. The mayor and youth council is really a great group of students that are working together to do a presentation in June at council. They have chosen as a project, a recreation project, that area, and they want to do a proposal for more year-round programs or activities or infrastructure. So they have something to present which is rather interesting for young people. They have thought beyond the mark, which is nice. I very much enjoy working with them. Councillor Pivoy, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, well, we, the Chinook Foundation is, is considered a leader among the southern region, although we don't always see eye to eye with all the other senior foundations. We, anyway, so, and that's in large part to do to Kim Schnorr, our director. He's a fantastic director of the Chinook Foundation. He does a great job. And, and he is, he's, he's known the way Marion was, you know, by the, by the AUMA. He's known in what's known as ASHA as a fantastic director. And again, that probably speaks to how just, you know, Cardston in general and McGrath are fiscally responsible and, and so through those policies and practices, very well respected. I had the honor of accompanying him, sent up to the ASHA convention, which was in Edmonton. And it was interesting because ASHA has never had quite the status that AUMA has as an advocate with the government. ASHA is very widespread. There were six zones and they all kind of operated independent. So creating an ASHA policy was a nightmare. It was like herding cats, you know? And so to strengthen the...
I'll talk about cats.
Oh, yeah. To strengthen the advocacy of ASHA, they decided to streamline a little bit. The criticism of that move was similar to what happened with the Alberta Health Zones. They went back to just massive zones.
Regions on the weather.
Didn't work. And so they went back to, you know, localized zones, more localized zones. So the criticism is, hey, if we do what they do, are we going to be, you know, six years from now just splitting back into our little zones? And I don't think so. I don't think so. Another huge criticism of the move is by, for instance, now, our southern region has been combined with Calgary. And the fear is, is Calgary going to own this thing? Are they going to have the bigger say? The reality, however, is that the rural areas of Alberta have more senior lodges than the, you know, urban centers.
That's right.
And so with just the way that the policies are set up, we actually can outvote the urbans. And that's, it's a rare opportunity for us to do that. And so, you know, I'm on an equal foot in there with Calgary, Cardston and Calgary.
So are we, are we good? So essentially, you have an organization that now has a voice at the level of the provincial government.
Absolutely. And it was a close vote. I'll tell you, it was a close vote. There were several people, specifically the urbans, who, wait a minute, rural against what kind of a vote? And anyway, I spoke on behalf of two of the motions that were before and again represented rural very well. I was pretty much approached by an offer of a position and I said, I can't, I can't work in ASHA, no thank you. But it went really well. There, I mean, we put Cardston on the map at that meeting.
Thank you.
People went, man, Cardston, just sit down.
Thank you. It's good. The more we can be on the map, the better we like it.
It was good.
Thank you so much for your report. Okay. Now we're going to start to look at the CEO report. Is there anything there that you would ask of Jeff? If not, I think Jeff could talk on nine F regarding the 2015 projects for the town. Are we okay with that? Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
Not a lot to get into. I just wanted to mention with this warm spring, we're, we're happy about the weather so far. We have an aggressive construction schedule this year. So we've extended the two blocks of sewer on Seventh Street East. And that went really well. Everything was in good shape there. We're ridden out of there quite quickly. You've seen now the crew is on Fifth Street West replacing the sewer line on that street. That's gone pretty quick. It's going to slow down here starting tomorrow because we're going to start hitting the service connections of the residents. So it'll, it'll slow down a bit, but we anticipate by mid to end of next week, you're out of there. And then right after that, they'll be going to Second Avenue in the industrial area to continue Second Avenue for another block, including water and sewer. And then we'll be coming down to Second Avenue here between First and Third. So normally, we wouldn't have started any projects hardly by this point in time. So it's been great that we've already got one and, one out of the way, one on the go. The other one I wanted to mention, and I may have Graham and Brandon do some correspondence. I don't think it's even on here, but I want, I was thinking about this one. Yeah, it's not on here. It's a project from last year. You will recall, let me get my bearings here. The high school, that would be Second Street. And then it juts over and turns at the seminary building. Geralt Levitt lives in there. Wade Pearson has a home in there. We were going to bore, we were going to directional drill a line down that and go into the new main. Last fall, we tendered that. We got quotes. We were ready to go. The contractor never showed up last year. And I don't even think they exist anymore. They don't answer their phone anymore. We can't get them.
That's great.
So they're gone. So we didn't do that. And now we've had Albert Tagle come down and he's looking at it and he's modeled it and we're doing some flow monitoring in that line. And he's a little perplexed as to why that line backs up. Because it really has very little flow in it. And so he's proposing an alternative solution. And I think this is the one, we've looked at a number of solutions. He's saying that the directional drills down the hill may be more problematic than we want and it might be an easier solution. So what he's suggesting is if you go up what would be Fifth Avenue to the T intersection at the Chinook. So Davidson's are on your right and there's a manhole there. And right now, everything comes down Fifth Avenue, turns at the manhole down to Geralt Levitt's, turns north again to Fourth Avenue and downhill.
I'll be diverted straight down.
He's suggesting an offset manhole in that intersection at the Chinook where everything would flow in from that whole area, drop in. The first place it would flow would be straight through to Fourth Avenue and then straight down the hill. It would bypass that area altogether.
Although it'd be good.
In the case of like high flow when we get it, there would be a higher discharge that it could potentially still come down and around. But in case, because we still need some flow in that line for those residents that are on it. But he's recommending that instead we just extend the sewer line that block down what would be, what did we say? Third Street. Thank you. And tie into it in Fourth Avenue as opposed to going down the hill with, and 99% of the flow would go that way and just bypass that area altogether. So that's, we have the money from the project last year and we talked about this with audit. It's reserved and it can fund that this year. So it's funded, that's not so much the issue. I just wanted to make you aware because, and I feel bad about this, we told those residents there would be something done on that line this year.
Two years ago.
And we had a contractor hired and we had everything going and then we never heard from them again.
Yeah. Okay.
So we're taking a different approach. I just, the other thing I should mention is we, we went to other contractors at directional drill and the price was so crazy, we simply had to walk away from it.
Okay. Jeff, would it be possible, once we make the decision regarding that bypass kind of, to let those, those residents in that elbow-shaped area know what's going on?
Brandon's just doing some flow monitoring. Albert was down last week. They're just looking at manhole elevations. We have a couple of small details to iron out to make sure it will flow right and then we can look at, we'll probably install our flow monitors still in that 90 degree this year just to see what the heck happens down there during high water. Because something's funny in that line, for sure. But once they modeled it, Albert set it up and modeled it, it just didn't make sense to drop it over there anymore.
Okay.
So I just want, while that's not capital for this year, it will be a project we'll be bringing forward into this year.
Councillor Barnes?
Did they have a bond on that contract?
Uh, no, because we got a bid.
Yeah.
And we got a tender and then we never heard from them again.
Oh.
Yeah.
So they didn't get that way.
Yeah, we didn't get the bond signing a contract.
So there was no money?
We got a bid. We told them they were going to get it.
Yeah.
So they gave us a date, they were going to show up. We never told them. And you can't, you can't get a hold of them at all anymore, so.
Okay.
So other than that, if there's any questions on the other projects, I'm feeling pretty good. Things like the, where is it?
Regarding the paving, we're going to still make an effort to advise the people in those areas.
Yeah, we've already sent, like, all of Fifth Street got letters of what our timeframe potentially was going to be. And the other thing, just as an aside, on Fifth Street, when we were digging that up, Brandon wrote a letter tolerantly saying, if you want to upgrade your water service line or your service lines, now's the time. And I know we have a couple of residents, I think, taking us up on it. And so, yeah, we'll keep in correspondence.
Thank you.
What's, what's the aeration windmills for the west? Tell me about that.
So we put these on the east last year. They're just small windmills that simply push air down into the, the big reservoirs and just help keep, keep things moving and keep things aerated down there. It tends to get pretty weedy. It tends to get pretty, there's a word for it. I don't want to say anaerobic because, but there just is a lack of oxygen that causes water quality problems.
Stagnant, maybe.
Yeah.
So it's like below the surface under there and...
Yes, go into a stone and they put out micro bubbles all through the reservoir. Yeah. The water quality in our east reservoir is fantastic. We didn't use that for a couple of years because the water quality was so poor, the treatment was hard to get it treated. And now that we've added 40, 200 fish and windmills, the water quality's great.
Yeah. Those windmills don't affect the fish at all.
Well, they love it. It gets them through the winter.
Yeah.
It aerates them through the winter, yeah.
Councillor Banry?
Eleven fifteen, Jeff. What's happening there?
That was just the rubber on the front of Civic Center.
Oh, that's a bad trip.
Yeah. I only used quite a big word for that, but it was just the rubber on the front of Civic Center.
Very debilitating.
The eco-friendly tires.
Yeah, just recycled tires.
Do we know what it's like to scrape snow off of that yet? Do we?
Ask me in six months.
Okay.
We're told they're in good shape.
The nice thing is on that, if you fall, it don't hurt yourself so much.
Yeah, it'd bounce right out.
All right. If we don't have any more questions, oh, Jeff, you have one more question for council.
Actually, it's not on this list. It goes back to your, your first report on the, on the creek remediation there. I wonder if you could just, anything different? You were saying there would be late in the season before they, they were able to start for... So with the creek, when I talked to DRP, they said, oh yeah, go in there and fix up around that bridge, just take some before and afters. It's not that easy. You don't just get, because it flows right to that north bank and so there's no way we can do anything out of the water. Because that water's coming right into the north bank, which is what we need to build back and reinforce. So Albert Tagle was down. We took a golf cart and went down there and looked at it. What the plan is, is there's going to be that open time to work, August 15th to October 1st or something, three weeks of September. And we're going to try, I've asked Albert to put together a reclamation plan for, there's about 11 spots on the creek from top to bottom, so that if some grant funding comes around, we're ready to go on. Now, DRP is going to pay for us to get things back to where they were before the event, but not to enhance anything. So we're just going to have to wait till that open window before we can do anything with that bridge. Now Albert looked at it and feels that the force is going to hit to the west of the bridge and that it's going to deflect back out and that the bridge with its pilings is secure enough that, he's not very concerned about it being compromised this year. I mean, barring a real big event, but we're banking on a little under-average snowpack and an early spring. Hopefully, it started melting a little already.
Yeah, just wait until it's ready.
So he was quite comfortable we wouldn't see compromise on that bridge. And then after that event's over, we can start to plan for fixing that up. So we've got two different grants in the hopper submitted right now, hopefully to help us aid in that. Disaster Recovery has still not hired their engineers to even review projects, so it just ended up, there was no way we were going to get approval. Because they don't have the people to even come look at the projects yet. And I know what, according to some engineering firms in Lethbridge, they're trying to contract out some firms regionally to take care of it because they just can't get people and staff to do it. They're just not engineers out there sitting around doing nothing. So they're having a little trouble with that. So until they get engineers on side, I hate to say this is the plan. This sounds highly irresponsible. We're going to cross our fingers a bit and hope that bridge is okay through June.
Yeah.
And I recognize how that sounds, don't get me wrong.
Love it.
My hands are just a bit tied as to what I can do between now and then.
Yeah. We appreciate that.
Just one more question while we're on this report again. The water slide fundraising, are we, do we have a person who's heading that up? Do we have a plan to try to do a little more fundraising for that?
I don't have anything formal to do it right now. It just, I don't think about it for weeks at a time, to be honest.
Yeah.
I know Doug's done a few things, talked to a few people, but no, I don't have something formal right now.
So I think, you know, as people see it going up, you know, that's a good opportunity to bring in some added funding.
But we had the money to cover it if we never got any more funding, right?
We have the money to cover it, but the project...
We're running Peter to pay Paul.
The, the project on its own, on its own, is short $75,000.
Sounds right without looking close, yeah.
It's, I think I'm pretty close. So we want to try to raise as much of that $75,000 for that project in order for the money that we recue to go back to their original needs.
Well, and the pool renovation after that, so.
Because we have the building. The building is another, is another large thing. Okay. Thank you so much, Jeff. We're going to carry on with 10 questions.
Eleven A.
Any questions for our administration? I think we covered it up right now. Eleven. Eleven A is a letter from Alberta Seniors and you can see it's a little bit of a sad news. If you look at the bottom of the first page, we had a grant in lieu of taxes that we used to receive for $34,582 in 2014. Those grants on Temple City Villa 1 and 2, which is a Chinook foundation, will no longer come to any of the foundation.
That's part of the cutbacks, eh?
That's part of the package to trim down. And eleven B, we're not happy, but what do we do? Eleven B, the Alcat allies, as for your information, there is similar information as to what we received before. I know that Lloyd is still working with the group in town to try to decide how we're going to manage those colonies. We don't have yet a report.
That letter's from a group down in Maryland.
Yes, I mean, honestly.
And it's a boilerplate letter, so.
Yeah. So eleven C, Janet Lozey. This is a thank you note that we received for letting them use the building. Eleven D, Laxton Town County. Now that's an interesting little bit of a letter from a women's prohibition that really said we should encourage to have more women in politics. And I couldn't agree anymore.
Just a comment, they did that in May too. Everybody's wearing those buttons and everybody promoting the report. So any idea what the percentage is for men versus women?
We, we're still about 30% to 70% men, 30% women, 70% men. We, we're not there yet. So that's trying to get, I think the magic figure is about 85 or 50/50 would be the, obviously, the best figure. But you also have to have women that desire to do it, right? So here...
I'm trying to get my wife to run for that. Tell me I have to.
Here, this said, they're challenging all the municipalities across Alberta to assist by donating a hundred dollar, but I don't know.
Your motion to extend...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Councillor Edmonds, would you like to do that for us?
What do we need, 15 minutes?
I don't know. Just then, one more time and then we won't have to do it again.
Put it happen now like this, we will be within...
Okay, move to extend the meeting till 8:30.
Thank you. Are you in favor? So I, I don't know how you feel about that. We normally don't give donations from our donation fund.
We're about to send judo.
What's that?
We're sending judo.
Send judo Alberta? No idea. Sorry, I didn't look it up. Okay, that was for your information. AUMA, if we want to put a resolution forward, we need to do that before May the 31st.
Do we have any concerns? We did a resolution last year, we passed.
Well, I have an idea of something that we could maybe work on. What I think we should maybe possibly work on is on presenting a funding model that would be more fair between counties and towns. Based on the recommended document that we have that gives us the formula. And I think there would be wisdom in presenting that because what I presented last year obviously had absolutely no impact. If you remember, the, the resolution that the town of Brooks presented was to levy another percent of taxes and to redistribute that 1% back to municipality. At this point, the government invoked on that one. So I, I was wondering if AUMA would be interested to see another resolution with a different model, totally different, which would be a model based on usage, which is the one that we are proposing to the county. And to create that as a minimum participation between county and town. And to create that as a minimum participation between county and town, not a maximum, because if you look at a county of Newell towards Brooks, they are giving them so much money, way beyond the usage. So I, I wondered, since the government doesn't seem to figure out a way to create fairness in that distribution, maybe we can offer them a suggestion.
The idea?
I, I don't know. Are you interested in, in me trying to draft something and we can look at it and see what it looks like? I mean, it might look like nothing and may say forget it. And that's okay.
We can discuss it around here, maybe we'll come up with--
It's just an idea. I just was looking at it and thinking, oh, what the, the citizen told us and I was thinking, why can't we figure out a way?
You're saying something similar to their shared services--
Yeah, yeah. Using that base. Okay, and the next one is AUMA.
We decided--
The resolution and on the back is absolutely confidential items, so the portion of our meeting is now completed. Yes?
I'm going to make most of it camera.
Thank you. Are you in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much, Poyet, thank you very much. Rennie?
Good night.